Well, I think we have our lovely group of guests today. So why don't we start? My name is Alex Sheerenbeck. I'm a member of Open New York and I'm delighted to have been asked to host this conversation. I'm not sure why, but you know, I care about ADUs a bit and I know a little bit about it, but I'm so excited to hear from our guests today. We have, you know, a slate of Open New York endorsed candidates. Marjorie Velazquez, Peirina Sanchez, John Sanchez, and Juan Ardilla. And I thought it might make sense to start by just going to each of you in turn to hear a little bit about you and about the district you're running for and your race. Why don't we start with Marjorie?
Hi, everyone. Marjorie Velazquez here, running for City Council District 13. It's in the northeast part of the Bronx. It encompasses areas like City Island, Silver Beach. We're also looking at Throsneak and Edgewater and Morris Park. And so it's a little bit of everything, if you will, even Westchester Square, which is one hub that has been seeing some increased development. Why? Why am I running? Look, I ran in 2017. I came super close. And it's the same reasons why I'm running again. It's to give our families the dignity that they deserve, representation with full integrity that is focused on community and building its up. It's something that I learned from my parents early on, dedicating yourself to your community. Building each other up means actually having a dedication to not just the now, the immediate results. It's actually building a future, building a long-term plan for each other. So it's looking at infrastructure. It's looking at how everything is just intertwined. And we cannot just look at one-term solutions or one policy solutions. We have to work together to fully fund what our families need, which for me, it's education, it's transportation, it's finding means and new alternatives when it comes to building. And it's making sure that we respect our families for the hard work that they've done, the burdens that they've carried for so long. And what we have to do is create a pathway so that way we can continue to build on generational wealth.
Thank you. Peirina?
Hello. All right. Well, secretly, the main reason I'm running for office is to be colleagues with these kick-ass people. No, I'm actually, I'm just really excited about the folks that we have running for office this time around. It's really exciting, but I'm excited to be here, super excited to be one of the Open New York endorsed candidates. You know, I was, I was born and raised in the Northwest Bronx, right? In Kingsbridge, University Heights, for as long as I can remember, it's walking out on these streets and seeing the familiar sights of, you know, street vendors and people walking, you know, cab drivers. My grandfather used to sell oranges on a street corner. And I remember being a little kid, you know, that when I would go and spend the weekends with my grandparents, I would sit there and he would, you know, have, you know what I'm talking about? It's like this little wheel that peels oranges for you and they go ahead and sell them. And so for me, you know, this district, District 14 in the Bronx, you know, is just an incredible, incredible story bottled up in one location, right? In one neighborhood of the abuses that we face, of the, you know, incredible hardship and intergenerational oppression and history and everything else layered on top of just like, screw it, resilience, right? Just power and like the ability to fight for our, fight for keeping the food on the table and a roof over our heads and all of that. And so for me, running for office is about making that just a little bit easier for people, right? For our people, right? Is bringing, bringing some investment to that resilience and making sure, right? That we are not being blind to the gifts right in front of us, right? I think we're going to talk about one of those today, which is the hidden housing that we have in so much of our, so many of our neighborhoods in the city. I'm an urban planner and for me, this is unlocking, you know, hidden housing is huge. But it's also about unlocking land value, right? Unlocking the resources that we have in the city in order to give back to the communities that need it the most, especially as we enter a fiscally difficult time. And so thank you so much for having, you know, for holding this today. And what up to my fellow candidates?
Thank you. Juan?
Hi, everyone. My name is Juan. I'm running for City Council in District 30 here in Queens. Masbit, Ridgewood, Middle Village, Glendale, Woodhaven, and Woodside. I actually grew up wanting to be a forensic scientist up until the age of 17. That was my heart and soul. That's what I was going to do. And then my mother, she faced unjust deportation and I had family suffering from persecution in terms of gang violence in Central America. So that's why I decided to get immersed in public service and public policy. And then I started working for council member Brad Lander right after college. And then I did the pre-K and 3K for all expansion at working at the DOE. And I also worked at the International Rescue Committee, supporting at-risk youth and refugees and asylees. And now I work at the Legal Aid Society, where I support New Yorkers with accessibility to benefits and legal representation. I was very happy to get my master's degree at NYU Wagner. Actually, I graduated this past May during the pandemic. We had a 30-minute virtual Zoom graduation, so that was quite the experience. But the campaign's been going really well. I'm really happy to be the first Latino to run for this position in this district. We've been getting really strong public support. Working Families Party has been very, very good to me. The Road to Justice Coalition, SO1199, Make the Road New York, Community Voices Heard Power, Councilmember Brad Lander, State Senator Jessica Ramos. This very interesting group called Open New York was also kind enough to endorse me, so I'm very happy. And then as of this morning, State Senator Michael Gennaris. So I'm very fortunate and it's been going extremely well. So I really appreciate you all and thank you for having me in your space. And I think I see an old colleague of mine on the call, so hello, Stephen.
That just leaves John.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me, Open New York team. Shout out to all of the fellow candidates. My name is John Sanchez. I'm running for City Council in the 15th District, which is the central Bronx. Think of Fordham Road, Fordham University, the Botanical Garden, the Bronx Zoo. And I'm running for a very simple reason. I want to make the 15th District a neighborhood where people want to remain in, raise their family and stay, rather than feel like they need to leave the neighborhood to make it. I grew up on 24th and Park Avenue, the other Park Avenue, the one in the Bronx. Much different than the Park Avenue downtown. And I actually launched the campaign writing an op-ed saying, "A wealthy neighborhood like Soho needs to do their fair share of bringing affordable housing to the city." That's how the campaign launched. And it's been successful as a result. I think the fiscal crisis we're facing right now, the challenges we're facing, we can't have more of the same in 2021. The people elected in June and November, we're going to determine the next 10 years of the city. And the next 10 years of this city needs to be one where we have abundant housing, housing for people of all incomes, and making sure we have neighborhoods throughout the city doing their fair share. That's why I'm running and I'm very pleased to be here. Thank you again.
Well, thank you. Look, you know, there are so many issues that you all care about, that you're passionate about, the things you're going to do in the City Council. But today, we're here to talk about a topic that is near and dear, I know, to Open New York's heart and I know to your heart, which is accessory dwelling units, which, God, that, we need a better name than that, don't we? We just got to decide. People like Casita, I don't know if that works in California. I don't know about here. We'll see. So, you know, we, but accessory dwelling units are a hot topic. It's, I feel like you, we're hearing a lot of people talk about them, but it's actually a very old idea. And just to give a little context, I actually want to talk about Vancouver, which is a city in North America that probably has done ADUs better than any other. You know, around World War II, Vancouver authorized ADUs, little basement and garden apartments, to help alleviate a wartime housing shortage around the workers that were going to be working in the port of Vancouver. And after World War II, this will be a familiar story, as affluence increased in the city, these apartments were considered a nuisance and largely made illegal. We roll around to the 1980s and Vancouver's attitude shifts. They start relaxing rules around legalizing secondary units in single-family neighborhoods. And in 2004, they legalized secondary units citywide. Now, a lot of the motivation in Vancouver was housing, but also environmental concerns. And by 2016, Vancouver had 30,000 ADUs. To put that in perspective, that's one in 10 homes in Vancouver was an ADU or what they call secondary suites or garden lane apartments. That's staggering. I think that speaks to just how much potential there is in this idea. Portland is a leader in the United States. In 2004, it legalized ADUs citywide. And importantly, it allowed for garages to be converted without the need for onsite parking to replace the lost parking, which really opens up opportunities. California has had a long, long process back and forth with some local efforts, but California really broke through when state legislation came to stop some of the NIMBY suburbs that weren't allowing ADU development to happen at all. And recently, in 2019, there was a very ambitious law that allows for one ADU and one junior ADU per lot. It allows a detached ADU up to 800 square feet with no local discretionary review required in a, as of right. It says that ADUs can be added to even multifamily dwellings, not just single-family. And it mandates that there be no impact fees or other kind of funny business that localities sometimes try to block ADUs from happening. And the result has been a surge in ADU construction. For example, after the 2016 law, which preceded the 2019 law in California, ADU permits in Los Angeles went from 257 in 2016 to 4,000 in 2017, and then 4,000 again in 2018. Now, if Los Angeles can allow for garage conversions in the land of the car, I think New York might be able to, too. Washington State has passed a similar law. State bills have been introduced in Virginia, Maryland, elsewhere. In New York, progress has been a little different. In the 1980s, upstate, a lot of towns authorized ADUs. And now they might be Airbnb, little bed and breakfast. They might be a place for in-laws to come when they're in town, but they're not a real source, not a legal source of housing. In New York, our conversation has mostly sent, in New York City, I should say, our conversation is mostly centered around our wealth of basement apartments. And when we talk about that, a lot of the units we're talking about are in the shadow market. They're technically illegal and tenants are deprived of the legal protections and safety protections that come with legalization as a result. Now, we're hoping for a breakthrough here in the city when you're all elected. But, but so far, we're not seeing a lot of daylight. And in fact, in some ways, we've reversed progress recently. The de Blasio administration recently defunded the Basement Apartment Conversion Pilot Program. It was a very, very promising program out in East New York, Cypress Hills, that was experimenting with a way to finance low and moderate income basement conversions. Very penny wise, pound foolish, when you think about it. They cut $1 million from that program that could have funded countless ADUs. And if, I know this group knows about the cost of affordable housing construction, that is probably the easiest way to fund new affordable housing you could find in this city. Yet it found the chopping block. I understand it's difficult times, but here we are. So that is some context for our conversation. And we have a few, I want to throw it to the candidates in turn to talk about some aspects of ADUs before we go to general questions we received. And the first, I wanted to ask Peirina if she would talk a little bit about the sort of tenant rights perspective and tenant aspect of ADUs as a policy solution.
Right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Alec. I mean, I think that there are a couple of critical dimensions, right? Increasing the housing supply will help us to hopefully bring down costs, right? But tenant protections, for me personally, are one of the most important components about implementing an ADU framework, right? So I, my background is in urban planning. So I worked at Regional Plan Association for years during the production of the Fourth Regional Plan. And I specifically worked in two areas. One is the anti-displacement measures and affordable housing recommendations of the Fourth Plan for the next generation. And I also worked in the community engagement work, right? So very closely with, you know, Make the Road, CBH, New York Communities for Change. And it's actually in that work, the community engagement work, where I sort of back, you know, backpedaled into advocacy for accessory dwelling units. Because in going to, you know, Brentwood in Long Island, and then going into Westchester, and then going into parts of Queens, right? You know, neighborhoods like where Juan Ardilla will be the representative. You know, you, you just see this reality that no matter what the laws are, right? No matter what is on the books, people will be, will be working to try to figure out a way to live, right? And so the reality that we saw through work with Make the Road is that, you know, folks are living with, you know, windows that are smaller than my hand, which is not very big. I'm a very small person. You know, people are living in all kinds of conditions. And so it's not a, it's less of a question of, should we legalize or, you know, use accessory dwelling units to, you know, bring them to code and have them be allowable in the city in order to increase the supply? But should we allow them so that we can bring dignity to the lives of tenants who are already living in these places, who right now cannot call 311 and complain about the status of their accessory dwelling unit, you know, or whatever they call it? Because if they do, they get threatened with eviction, right? So for me, it's very central to ensure that we are considering the reality that people are living in and trying our very best to make their conditions and their environment humane, because that's part of what they deserve as human beings in our city.
Thank you. And Juan, I wonder if you could talk a little bit about the motivation for ADUs as affordable housing creation? I think that's probably what comes to people's minds first.
Yeah, definitely. So in my district, unfortunately, there are parts where gentrification is a real thing. And it's outpacing affordability. And so what we, for 2022, the affordable units in my district are actually projected, 44% of the affordable units in my district are projected to be slashed. So we need to find creative solutions in terms of how to support tenants, how to set up New Yorkers for success. We can't do MIH in my district because rents aren't high enough to cross-subsidize. So I think legalizing ADUs is actually a very creative way to expand housing. Can support the tenants that live here, the ones that are losing that affordability. Again, my district also has small homeowners, so I think this is a good way to also support them, which I'm sure other candidates here as well have similar dynamics as me. And it also creates safe constructing jobs for union workers. So I think it's a three-fold, it's a win-win-win situation, and I think it's a very, very powerful way. Obviously, it's not the ultimate solution to the affordability crisis, but I think it's something that we can be doing right now that can go a long way to support New Yorkers and can support tenants and set people up for success.
Thank you. Marjorie, I wonder if you could pick up that thread that Juan started about the homeowner angle here?
Certainly, Juan and I share a lot in common when it comes to our districts. And specifically, it's how have our homeowners been affected by this pandemic, right? A lot of them are facing increasing demands because lots of folks have lost their jobs. How do you make ends meet in a way that you still, once again, I'm saying this word in a dignified manner? You've busted your butt for this American dream, for your dream house. And now it's a pandemic, which you have no control over. And your spouse may have lost their job. You have family that may have to live in with you. And the fear of the DOB calls, right? Those violations and those fines are huge. And that, unfortunately, in my district also, that, you know, that has become a tool for certain people to use against each other, which is definitely unfortunate, especially during the pandemic. But what we need to focus in is how do we give our homeowners their power? Their power is owning their home and making sure that they're offsetting it in a way, their fees, right? Their mortgage prices, this is the best way, right? Let's immediately housing your family that may have been displaced. Immediately focusing on building up your community. You know, if you have a neighbor that needs a home and a space, that you can come to this. But for long-term, it actually helps you build your own wealth and it helps offset these costs, which is huge, especially for a lot of the families that have taken on this burden during the pandemic. We really need to focus in on, you know, looking at what we have as spaces, right? When we're looking at affordable housing, right? The thought immediately goes to these large buildings, right? And we have this right here in front of us, right? We have our own families having the ability to convert their own space that they own and they've struggled so long and so hard to own. Give them this power. Give them their, their own right to say, yes, I can do this. And let's do this in a way that's meaningful. Let's actually make it easier for folks. And we're not saying return to tenement days. We're literally saying, hey, let's create a pathway. And let's respect the work that our families have done to build and own their own home and actually have them have the power to say, you know what? I can actually offset my mortgage, especially during these times where they're tough. Let me do this. And that's what I want families to have, that power over their own home.
Thank you. John, I wonder whether you could talk a little bit about the sort of hidden density or gentle density aspect of this? I think this is why many people are attracted to the idea of ADUs as sort of breaking through some of the conversations we have around development.
Yeah, so I've had experience presenting the idea of ADUs to one of the richest community boards in the city, Brooklyn CB6, and one of the poorest, my own, Bronx CB6. And it's an issue where people who normally wouldn't agree on things tend to agree on things. I have board members that are Republicans who say, oh, this makes sense. I actually wanted to have an extra unit. I wanted to make some extra money. And then you have other folks who rent and they say, you know what? I don't need a two-bedroom apartment. I would like to have a nice studio, a nice one-bedroom. If the city's willing to promote this, it allows more housing. I was actually shocked when I spoke at Brooklyn CB6. We even took it a step further. And Brooklyn CB6 was supportive of eliminating single-family zoning. And then Bronx CB6 did the same thing. So I think people understand that we are in a housing crisis. I think to your point, Alec, it's the gentle way of saying we need more housing. Because people, homeowners, they like making more money. And also people in the neighborhood want more housing, but at a lower cost and they may not necessarily need the two, three bedrooms. So it's one of the few areas where I get people to agree on, which is great.
Thank you. So we got so many good questions here, and I bet more questions are coming. So why don't we start rolling through them? And Juan, the first I will field, which is what changes to codes and laws at the city level need to be made to encourage the creation of ADUs? Where to start? I mean, the reality is that the most effective way of doing this is probably going to be the city creating a whole new sort of regime that cuts through the rest of the zoning and building and maintenance codes. Just tailor the rules to ADUs and say the other rules don't apply. Because if you start to try to flip through the code books and just figure out which of these rules is going to interact in a negative way with the ability to homeowners to create housing, you know, it's going to take a long time. But some of the ones that are most salient are obviously single-family zoning, you know, which just right there, it makes it impossible to invite another family onto your lot. There are mandatory parking requirements are a huge, huge issue. And it's not just that they require a new parking space onsite for the new unit. It's that it prevents people from converting the existing onsite space. And so a really ambitious bill would get at both of those things. And you don't have to relax parking units for all purposes, although I know many of our members would think that that's a good idea. You could just do it for ADUs. But that's, that's really, really critical. That's basically a technical impossibility issue in most of the neighborhoods. That could be some of the most fruitful opportunities for this. There are setback requirements that would impede ADUs in a lot of neighborhoods, especially neighborhoods that have attached housing, but still have backyard opportunities or basement opportunities, extension opportunities. There are ceiling height requirements that could be relaxed. And now, now we're starting to talk about some rules that need to change at the state level with the multiple dwelling law and state housing maintenance codes, my understanding. But the city has a lot of the power to change these things, not the multiple dwelling law, but many of the other things. There are window rules that can be relaxed and the Basement Apartment Conversion Pilot Program sort of points the way toward how that would be done. And then there's a big conversation to be had about basements versus sellers. Because in New York, sellers are technically not eligible to be housing. And the difference is whether half of the ceiling height is above ground or below ground. And so if it's, if half is below ground, even by an inch, it's, it's just, it can't be housing. So those are some of the things that need to change if we want to really open up these opportunities. Now, we got a great question that's related, and Peirina, I wonder if you could talk about it? A lot of folks now are talking about comprehensive planning. And I wonder if you could talk a little bit about how comprehensive planning can be made to lead to adequate levels of housing production, rather than just being, you know, toothless?
Right, right. No, thank you. And I, I think this, that a comprehensive planning framework, and I'll explain why I say framework and not just a comprehensive plan, is critical to New York City, right? In the 1960s, we had our last and miserably failed attempt at comprehensive planning in New York City. The planning process took a few years. The writing, production process took some more time. And by the time that the plan was ready to be released to the public, it was obsolete, right? And that is an argument that is used today to talk about why New York City, a city of, you know, eight million people, growing, growing every, well, hopefully continues to grow, is not capable of producing a comprehensive plan, right? And that's, the 1960s and 2020 are quite different. And we do have the capacity to take a step back and, you know, take a, take a look at the city and say, where is our housing production? Where is our transit? Instead of saying, these are the five neighborhoods, by the way, they happen to be low-income communities of color that we're going to rezone, that we have the ability to look at the city comprehensively and think about what we need as a city. And so I, I think that, you know, for me, I'm very excited to see there being growing calls for a comprehensive plan in New York City that would look at not just housing, but also, you know, uses, noxious uses and, you know, facility siting and all of that, and look at the capital budget and have a real capital budgeting process to go along with the plan. But I think that there are two challenges that will be really, really important to get right. One is a comprehensive plan for the city vis-à-vis community priorities, right? There is a balance to be struck there. And then there's, there's a second piece of it, which is the teeth, right? Like what is, how do we, people are tweeting, sorry about that. How do we, how do we hold, how do we hold the comprehensive planning framework to cause and make sure that we actually implement what we, what we say is necessary? And so taking, taking the first piece on the community input and balancing community, you know, anxieties and fears and realities, right? With, with the challenge of a comprehensive plan that takes a citywide framework. I look to New Jersey. I don't think it was a perfect process, but they have a statewide comprehensive plan. And they, they did this, they pursued this process, this model called cross-acceptance, where localities actually came up with their local plans at the same time that there was a state plan being produced. And then there was this process where they had to meet and talk about their processes and reconcile the differences. And now that sounds terrible and awful in terms of how many meetings and how many fights and all of that. But ultimately, that is what good planning is. Good planning is real conversation among all different stakeholders, where people actually feel like they get their voices heard. And, you know, whether, whether you're afraid of, you know, that there is going to be displacement and gentrification that can come to your neighborhood as a result, but you get to air that and talk about what are the, what are the roadblocks that could be put in place to protect you? You know, that's, that's how you really do it. So I, you know, I'm excited that there's a comprehensive planning framework, piece of legislation now before the council again. But, but I do think that that's going to be important. And then the second piece about how do you actually have teeth? I mean, we, you, you put the targets into, into the charter, right? Like you, you put the targets into the rules, laws and codes. And sorry, I worked at City Legislative Affairs and this is what I did for two years. But you, you actually codify and provide specific targets to our goals within the written structures that govern the city of New York, so.
That sounds right to me. Marjorie, I wonder whether we got a question about how to sort of think about attacking inequality through a sort of a bigger housing and social lens? I wonder if you could give your perspective on that?
So the secret's out. John Sanchez and I went to the same college.
John Sanchez and I went to the same college. I graduate a couple of years ahead of him. He actually went to college with my brother, so it's really funny. And it was NYU. And I had a pretty good job coming out of NYU. And guess what? I couldn't stay there. Why? Because I couldn't afford it, right? And when we're looking at how we develop and continue growing our black and brown communities, right? With great jobs, well, we also have to focus on great housing, right? We have to create a pathway. And I'm fortunate, I'm fortunate that my mom did have a home, right? And that it was a two family home and that I was able to stay at one part of the house until I can move out on my own and find my own place, right? That was me. I was lucky, right? I was fortunate with my parents' hard work and, and them getting their own home. But it shouldn't be that way. When we're looking at equity, when we're looking at how we keep on building, right? Because we are giving folks an opportunity, right? To develop themselves and we're recognizing all their hard work and efforts, especially like a college grad. Here I go, this is me being a brand new star. And guess what? I have to move back with mom, right? And certainly I could have taken it back, right? And, and taken it in a different way. But I'm proud that my mom did that. I'm proud of the opportunity that developed. And I'm proud of like the fact that I still live in the Bronx. It's how we keep on building on that and building opportunities for ownership, opportunities to develop forward. And where we're looking at social issues, right? It begins with wealth, wealth building, having control over what your future looks like, your children's future. Because that's how we're going to rise, we're going to rise up together. And providing that aspect is the first step in dealing with this. And making sure that we're attacking affordability in a reasonable way and making sure that when we're talking about fair share, that everyone understands what fair share is. And that specifically when it comes to NoHo and SoHo that just wouldn't afford, give me a chance to live there. So there we go.
Absolutely. You know, John, I wonder whether you could field the next question. We're at a point now where it looks like the council is finding it difficult to vote on nearly any U-LR in a particular private applications. How do we, how do we get out of this particular problem? Because, look, there are a lot of, we could all debate the individual merits of applications, but I suspect some of them ought to be approved or considered.
That's the million dollar question, right? I think to take a step back, I think the next council needs to be proactive and pitch our own rezonings. We shouldn't be waiting for the city to come to the table. We should identify block and lot areas in our district, which we think could work with housing and propose something to that administration. I think borough delegations should be doing the same thing. So working collectively where we're talking about, okay, here's how much housing we need. Here's how much housing demand we're facing. But also here's the school seat need that we're seeing. Often in the Bronx and throughout the city, the school construction authority will tell you, well, we have funding for this, these, these seats, but we can't find a location, which really makes no sense to anyone. So I think council members and delegations have to be proactive. But also we need council members that are willing to be courageous and call out neighborhoods that have not done their fair share historically. There is a large patch of land in Staten Island that only allows single family homes. There is a big piece of land in Riverdale, which only has single family homes. Those neighborhoods need to be called out. And it will be contentious, but every time I'm knocking on doors or making phone calls, the number one thing people tell me is I want to find affordable housing. And there's two prongs of it. One, we need to supply. There's just not enough supply. We have 53,000 people living in shelters. Even if they all moved into all the luxury apartments people say are vacant, there still is not enough housing for them. But then the second piece of it, which I think is the root of it, is how do we make sure that we have more rents that are $900 a month? That's what people want. And I think that that requires some federal and state help. I mean, Section 8 should be an entitlement. Everyone that qualifies for Section 8 should be able to get it. We need to have the housing stability support on the state level. We need to expand vouchers. If we expand vouchers and give people the option of where they want to live, that's great. But then with all these new voucher holders, we need to make sure we build housing for them to use their voucher somewhere. But that's how I approach it. But I'm hoping that the fiscal crisis wakes the new council up because we can't say no to every new housing development. It's just untenable. And when you speak to people in the neighborhood, they want the housing. They just want it to be at a rate that they can afford, which is where the vouchers come into play.
John, that is music to my ears. So I, I wonder how many units are we talking about here with ADUs to turn back to, to ADUs? I mean, I think that that's a question on a lot of people's minds. And, and Juan, do you have, do you have a thought on that?
Yeah, definitely. We're still working out the specifics in terms of what the actual number is. But the RPA, the Regional Plan Association, they believe, or they estimate that by legalizing ADUs, we'll be able to create 100,000 new affordable rentable spaces in New York City, which is very exciting. I mean, we all know housing is a human right. We know that, and by legalizing this, we'll be able to legislate that. So I'm really excited to, to fight for this. I think it's going to, it's something that's going to benefit my district, definitely, just given the land use patterns and the composition of my district. But I think it's also something that will set up a lot of New Yorker, if not every New Yorker, up for success. So I think it's just, it's an incredible opportunity to really address the housing crisis. We're looking at something that can really grow throughout the city and we could be at the forefront of this movement. So I think it's, it's going to be really, really powerful once we, once we're there. Because we're all going to be there legislating this in 2022.
You know, John, John called this the million dollar question. Maybe, maybe let me put a finer point on it. You know, we seem to be in a place right now where to a lot of people, they believe that the progressive political position has to be against building new housing. How, how do we break through that narrative and, and talk to the people who, who feel that way and come by it very honestly? I mean, I, I grew up here in Brooklyn and this is what I hear from my family. This is what I hear from my mom, you know? Purina, can you start to unpack maybe how we change the narrative here?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I, I think, I think John, my, my cousin from a, a different family, just kidding, no relation. But I think, I think you're right, right? Like I, I was on Community Board Five during the Jerome zoning. And, you know, the, the cries against the rezoning were there. They were, they were real. But the substance was not against the housing production, right? The, the substance was about who is it going to be for? How is it going to be for me? And what else are you going to address? These promises that are being made, you know, for, for benefits that will come out of the rezoning are things that we have, you know, needed for decades and decades. And in fact, being the nerd that I am, when I, when I was on the board, I, I went back to, to Community Board Five's Statement of District Needs for as long back as I could find, dating back into the 90s. And you better believe that our Step Streets that ended up being repaired because of the rezoning were in disrepair 20 years before, right? Our elevated lines that got better lighting, you know, and, and had some security improvements and enhancements. Those were, excuse my French, they were shit years before, right? And so when, when we talk about, you know, what the opposition was about and, and what it was like in this district, it's, that's, that's why I always go back to, to comprehensive planning. Because any, any sort of holistic look at the city would have our communities, right? John and I have neighboring districts light up like a Christmas tree in terms of need, right? And so when you, when you talk about, you know, plans for the future development, school seats, you know, green spaces, environmental justice, when you take all of these planning concepts into, into one view, then you, then you start to understand that, you know, if, if for, for once, a community like mine, median income of $21,000 a year, 97%, over 97% people of color. And like I said in the beginning, just, just generations and generations of, of disadvantage, right? When you, when you talk about coming into a community like ours and finally giving some government attention to our people and listening to our voices, you better believe that you're going to hear what you're going to experience is an eruption of frustration. And that's what that was, right? That's what the community board process was. And so when, we can't really, for me, we cannot talk about the future development of our city. We can't talk about land use without acknowledging and really thinking about having a real plan for how we're going to repair the injustices of the past and how we're actually going to be there for our people, right? And so it's, it's tough because you can't, we need to continue to develop and we need to continue to build, right? And, and I think that's, that's completely right. But we can't, you know, have this one sided conversation. And, and the last point that, that I would, you know, want to add there is that as we think about these holistic conversations and, and, you know, giving voice to, to communities that have been ignored for far too long, I think it's also important to, as hard it is, as it is, you know, and I'll confess as a camp, council candidate, like we are not, we don't exist in a vacuum. When it's not just District 14, it's not just the Bronx, it's not just New York City. We are an ecosystem that is regional in a national context. And we have to, we have to, have to, have to keep that in mind. We have to be talking to Jersey City, we have to be talking to Yonkers, we have to be talking to all of our neighbors. Because at the end of the day, when, when an individual who lives in one of our communities is looking for housing, they don't care, right? They don't care if their number is going to change from 14 to 15, unless they have political ambitions. But in, in all seriousness, they, they don't care and, and they, and we have to come together to, to solve these things. And so I think that when I, when I get excited seriously about, you know, the, the next crop of leadership in the council, it's about folks that will think bigger in this way and collaborate across districts, across even municipalities to, to solve these intractable issues.
Thank you. We got a, we got a great question in the chat, which is how, how do we see ADU laws working with respect to homeowners who are not accustomed to acting as landlords suddenly being landlords? And, and what do you think the city could do to make sure that homeowners have a good experience and that conversely, the tenants understand that they're dealing with very small time, first time landlords in many respects? Marjorie, do you, do you have thoughts on that?
Certainly for me, here, Community Board 10. And I've seen a lot of the work that we have done in educating folks. And I take my position as Municipal's Chair very seriously in organizing different avenues of education, right? Before the pandemic, it was one on ones. It was off committee meetings where we just give the opportunity for folks to understand, right? Meeting people firsthand and, and explaining because it is a different transition. Understanding the laws and also having, so it is a education by means of community forums, town halls, but also one on ones. And also having a dedicated phone line for folks to understand that they have a resource available to them. So it is a new level of commitment, but we can do this, you know? It, it doesn't take that much of a, of us to dedicate ourselves to our community as it should. And, you know, the first step should be our community boards because of the fact that that's where it should always go to. You know, they are, we are here for them, right? It's a governmental asset that is all volunteers and I'm proud of it. And it, it's because we want to be there and we want to help our community and it's this dedication that's going to see us through.
That's so right. You know, and something that occurs to me too is that I'm sure you all heard, there's, there's been an idea bandied around a tenant bill of rights that would be a sort of clear distillation of the rules that apply to both landlords and tenants. That could be a mandatory part of lease packets, a little bit like those lead paint disclosures that we've all probably ignored. And so, you know, it's a way to boil down into plain English, what can be like cryptic, totally indecipherable nonsense in a lease. Or, I mean, God help people who, who would try to Google this and figure it out themselves. And, and so that could be a, a way of trying to get at this problem too. I bet we could get some more questions in the chat in the, in the last 10 minutes we have. I want to bring up one thing that I think we've talked about a little bit, but, but haven't addressed squarely, which is the way this, that ADUs can be an integration and racial justice issue. I think that we are having a conversation in America just in the last few years about the deep, deep, deep seated role of racism in our zoning policy. And I think a lot of people have, have, have not until very recently started to figure some of that out. I, I wonder whether, whether one of our candidates would like to talk a little more about it.
I'll start. I'll just say, you know, my parents live in a development where they couldn't live in 1968. They live, they live in Parkchester. They wouldn't have been allowed to live there in the 68. I think the zoning, the zoning issue is the issue. And I'm going to keep speaking about these wealthy neighborhoods in our city that don't allow housing to be built. They need to be called out. They benefited from being shaded green and blue when the federal government had these redlining maps. They need to do their part. They need to be called out. And it's going to make some tough discussions, but they need to be called out. They have not done their fair share. They keep talking about neighborhood character. Well, I think people bring character, not buildings. And they need to do their fair share. They need to be called out. And I'm not just going to talk about neighborhoods in the city. I think to Pirena's point, this is regional. There are places in Long Island, right near the L I double R, which do not allow housing to be built. And I think we do need the state to get involved. It, yeah. But zoning, it's like, it's like these invisible rules where you think about. I always took the train. And I always would wonder when I was young, how come the demographics of the train change when I go from 86th Street on the 456 line to 125th Street? And I had no idea. And when I was young, I thought, oh, well, I guess white people just live downtown and everyone else lives uptown. I didn't understand. And then I looked, you know, I read the color of law. I'm like, oh, this was government designed. This was intended to be this way. And we need to undesign the red line. And we need to be adamant about that. And we need to be courageous about that because there are plenty of wealthy people in this city and in the state who are going to push back very hard. But I think, I think it's a time right now where we need courageous leaders. I think everyone on this call is willing to take that call and be courageous.
John, I'm reminded of my own neighborhood in Park Slope, where I grew up. When I went to our local public school, there were a lot more black and Latino kids. Now I walk by, there's a lot of white kids. There are Black Lives Matter signs. We've made some progress and we've made some steps, steps back. And I hope people are ready for this, this kind of hard conversation. Casey has said in the chat, it's maybe more of a comment than a question, but he'd love for the candidates to address how ADU legalization can bring safety at home to many of the workers who have been helping keep us safe during this crisis. And I'm sure that we've all seen these heat maps that show the virus tracking overcrowded conditions to AT.
My district, I have Throsneak and Country Club, and we have some of the highest rates right now. What this means for our workers, it, it would be an ability, once again, for families to not incur debt, right? What does that mean, right? Having an available space for someone to take care of themselves and to not contaminate the rest of the family. Having that ability to be there for your family in a, in a way and, and shelter in place, if you will. For us, it's a scary thing. It's a reality, especially as the rates have not fallen. And we have done our best with, when it comes to notifying folks of wearing masks and stuff like that. But it really means providing more efforts in shelters and making sure that we're providing homes for folks that need it. And actually just to mystifying this whole ADU world, that it's taken a lot of heat. As you had started off by saying that there is a way and there is a world where we can provide families with this responsibility. And look, I think that with Pirena, John and Juan and myself taking this on from the get go, so that when we start in 2020, we already have legislation in our hands and in place to introduce, right? It's a being that aggressive. And I, I, I think it's fair to say that I know the other three candidates pretty well. And I know that they are passionate about making a difference and making a change. And it's, it's folks like this, this group that we're going to do this and we're going to accomplish it. And, and that's what we need to be innovative and aggressive to protect our families, both with a safe home and actually providing folks an, an ability to live in a dignified manner. both with a safe home and actually providing folks an, an ability to live in a dignified manner.
Anybody else want to jump in on that one? We did get a, a good, another good question, which is, you know, okay, we talked about in general development obstacles, and we talked about some of the opportunities. But if, if this legislation, a, a real robust ADU legislation were introduced in the council tomorrow, what would be the biggest barriers? Who would be, where would the big political pressure points come from? And, and, and how would we negotiate those? Anyone want?
Definitely. I think one of the, the biggest barriers would be fo- folks that are more on the corporate developer side in terms of profit seeking, not really fighting for New Yorkers, not really advocating for housing for all. And I think one of the biggest issues, one of the biggest things that we need to keep in mind in terms of twenty twenty or one of the, you know, one of the moral of the stories is the need for racial justice. And if you want racial justice, that starts with housing justice. So I think in terms of why this is important, it's because it's supporting black. And if you want to support black and brown New Yorkers, you need to expand housing. If you want to support people that were suffering during the pandemic, it starts with housing. We need safe, affordable, sustainable housing for every New Yorker. And so that's why I think in terms of, we need to bring more awareness as to what ADUs are. Let folks know that this is a good thing that supports everyone involved. And that's how you get buy-in because it's conversations like this that really makes the difference. And then a, as a legislator, that's going to be our responsibility in terms of bringing awareness to the district, why this is valuable, why this is a good thing for everyone. And again, not falling under pressure to, to corporate greed.
Purina, did I see you raise your finger or hand?
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I, I agree. I mean, and, and to pick up on, on Juan's point about corporate greed. I mean, I think there's another question I saw in the chat that's, you know, about how we engage folks in the progressive movement who seem to be just completely anti any development, anti housing, right? And I, I think that's a, that's a critical question, right? And I think it has to do with, with Juan's point about corporate greed. And what, what I think, you know, needs to, needs to happen more so is candid discussions about profits in this space, right? And, and specifically, I, 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 you will hear me yell out, you know, public land for public good, especially where, where it comes to, to Nycha, right? Because I, I do believe that we have a duty to treat, you know, land as the, as a valuable, valuable asset with immense potential to, to impact the public good as it is, right? It's oil is to Texas as land is to New York City, right? And, and if we could capture more of that value and turn it into good for, for repairing Nycha, for example, I think we can have different kinds of conversations, right? And so when you talk about, you know, programs that bring in private, private dollars, private capital and insert a profit motive into a system where there wasn't any, you know, you start to, to, to muddle, you start to muddle purposes there. So, so I think, I think it's having nuanced conversations about where, where do these partnerships make sense? Where do they not make sense? And how, how can we have honest dialogue, right? Honest, like no Twitter fingers, no, you know, no, no bashing, but like, yo, we have a housing crisis. We have a crisis of inequality and racism and, and injustice. And both of these things, all of their, they're related, you know, of course, but we have to, we have to tackle them and we have to do so genuinely. Because every minute that we lose in, in just being theatrical and, and, and not getting things done is a, a family that gets evicted, is somebody who gets, who freezes over in the winter, right? Like, this is real stuff and we need to, we need to come together and figure it out. Because ultimately, we, we have shared visions for how we want to see the world.
Well, we are at our hour. And I, I know a little bit about what these candidates are probably doing next. And I'm sure they have other things on the plate tonight, so we don't want to keep them for too long. But I just wanted to say what a breath of fresh air this group is. As someone who has grown up here, I worked in city government a little bit. I, you know, working and hearing what people are saying about housing policy, sometimes I thought I was taking crazy pills. Like, I was the only person who, who thought there was something fundamentally broken with the city that doesn't want to build housing when we need it so bad. And it's hard to feel hopeful sometimes, reading the headlines, talking to people. But, but you all make me feel very hopeful. So thank you, thank you so much. I hope we shower you with donations. I hope we shower you with petitioning help. And if we can knock doors, I, I don't know whether we're going to be knocking doors. Let's, let's pause, let's, let's, whatever. But, you know, whatever we can do to help you, because this is, we have such an opportunity in twenty twenty-one and, and you, you all would make such an addition to the council. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was fun being here.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Happy New Year.
New Year.
Happy New Year. Take care. Thank you.
New Year.
Appreciate it.